Good. All right, so we're being recorded by Area 58 as well now. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll look that up on my phone.
We have our interviews for legal counsel, Paul Durensis, 910, Jason Talman, Mean Talman, asterisk, 940. At 1010, we have Jason Rollins, Rollins ASAP LLC. At 1040, we have Ron's May, Ron's May. PC, and then we have discussions. Junk Cars, Junk Hasidism, 715.
Old Plymouth Street, 27 Hillside Avenue. Zoning Bylaw Review, Project Update. Eldana Road Land Transfer, Status of Parcel A. Sale by the Town to the State. COVID News Issues. Remote Meetings, Alcohol Sales, Outdoor and Takeaways. ARP Funding to the Town. ARPA Funding through Plymouth County. Town Bank Form, Sarah Nobles. Youth and Rec Commission. Contract with Police Chief John Chaves. Public Meeting. Discussion of Contract with Sergeants for FY21. Possible Vote to Go into Executive Session on Piccarelli versus Halifax, Case 1. Cohen 21 CV 11039. As Discussing Strategy with Respect to Litigation in Open Meeting May Have Detrimental Effect on the Bargaining Position of the Town. Jet Ski Problems. Jet Ski Problems at Mont Ponce Pond. Traffic Issues in Walnut Street. Complaint by David Macio against Margaret Seltzer. Complaint by Margaret Seltzer against Amy Elchuk. Complaint by Teresa Renaud against Amy Elchuk. Possible Executive Session. Discussion, Possible Actions on Piccarelli versus Halifax, Case 121 CV 11039.
I'm moving.
Sir, say. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. You've got two minutes. Charlie, do you want to just give us?
So on the Junk Cars, the Board had asked me to send certified letters to the owners of those two properties. They were invited, if they wished to, to meet with the Board back on Tuesday earlier this week. We never received any response, period. I didn't know what the Board wanted to do at this point, whether it wanted to start filing on a daily basis, in which case what we would do is, usually we wait 10 days and send the equivalent parking ticket to them, and that starts the filing process. They can appeal the fine in court. I don't know if the Board wants to take some sort of other action.
What's the Board's opinion?
We've sent them a registered letter.
Yep.
Have we had an officer deliver it to the property?
We have not had an officer. It was sent by regular post office.
Have we got any response from the letters that were sent?
No.
I'll suggest we let one of the legal officers make a delivery and see if that helps.
Okay, is there a second for that?
One second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Zoning Bylaw Update. Well, actually, it's 910 now, so. First up is Mr. Durensis. Do you mind coming up? Have a seat.
Oh, I'll grab a second seat. Go ahead, yes. So, right up here, the mics are tied into our feed, so do speak into the mics. They're not part of the PA system for the room. They're part of the feed to the outside.
How you doing?
Howdy.
Do you want us to tell us a little bit about your firm and how you think you can help Halifax?
Sure. First, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Paul Durensis. I have a history of service to the town going back 20 years. I think I met Troy way, way back.
Second year I was in the office.
Yeah, a long time ago. I've been serving the town ever since in various capacities. It's been truly a wonderful relationship. I like the people that I've worked with. I've liked the town. I've liked the feel of the town, the people. And because of that, I think what, how I would describe us as practical, loyal, and caring. In terms of who we are and who I am, I have been continuously a Town Counsel since 1986, so 35 years I've been doing this job. But at the same time, what makes us kind of unique is that I myself have been a Select Board Member. I've done that nine terms, 27 years. I think you've got me beat, but 27 years I've been a Select Board Member. And as part of that, well, before that, I was an elected member of the Planning Board, so I served as a member of the Planning Board dealing with all of the land use issues that a community has to face. I also was a member of the Finance Committee of my town, again, before I became a Select Board Member. So I'm a former President of the Massachusetts Select Board Association, in which I represented all 1,185 Select Board Members throughout the Commonwealth. I have 10 years' experience on the MMA Board of Directors. That's the Mass Municipal Association. I've been an advisor on local affairs to two Governors, Deval Patrick and Charlie Baker. I'm currently serving the General Court as a member of a Legislative Commission dealing with the future of qualified immunity, which is a legal doctrine that protects all of you from personal liability. So we bring a combination of the Town Counsel aspect, but also the perspective of sitting on your side of the table and understanding the decisions that you have to make, the role that you perform in your community, and the stresses that are upon you. That's why I can say we truly have practical knowledge of how to get things done. We have a number of lawyers. This isn't, we're not a solo practitioner. I'm not a solo practitioner. I'm with a firm. I have a number of people that I work with. We've included the resumes. You all had an opportunity to meet one of my colleagues. Naomi Kawamoto was here several weeks ago to talk about a particular case that we are handling for the town of Halifax. She couldn't be here today. She wanted to be here today. She's got an appearance in a court, so she sends her regards and her regrets. But with me is Len Koppleman, so I'd like to turn the floor over to Len so that he can say a few words.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to chatting with you about the role of Town Counsel. It's something that's very near and dear to me. When I graduated law school, I went to work for one of the big law firms in Boston, and didn't feel very satisfied. I mean, I'd have someone sit in the other chair, and if I were successful, so what? I mean, the question was, what have I done? And I got interested in the towns and became an elected Town Meeting Member in my particular town and moved up and became Assistant Town Counsel to the leader of the Town Council's Association way, way back. And it got to me, and I decided to forget the big firms, and I was really interested in towns. I could go to bed at night and know I'd done something. And so I grew this firm called Coleman and Page. We're now KPLaw.com. And I'm proud of it. But unfortunately, it got too big. I kept training people, and I did a lot of towns myself. I enjoyed doing them myself. In fact, I was thinking about the ones nearby, and I look at Hanson, Pembroke, Kingston, Carver, Rockland, Plymouth, Lakeville. I was Town Counsel of each of those towns, and I did the work for them. But eventually, we got larger, and I had to spend a lot of time training, and I missed doing the Town Counsel work. I didn't mind training young people, but it wasn't as satisfying. And eventually, the people I had hired and trained that were what I considered my equals had retired. And I figured, you know, maybe it's time for me to retire. I tried it for a few months, and one of the towns called that I used to represent. I said, "What'll it take to get you back?" And it was my first town, so I decided to go back, and I did it. And then other towns were calling me up, and I needed some help. I mean, it's not a one-man practice, a one-person practice. And Paul's firm was very special. He wasn't looking to represent the world, and he did a really good job. I had two competitors. One of them's out of business, and Paul was the other. And he was superb. And I used to bump into him annually at the MMA meeting, and we'd always joke and chat. So in order for me to really represent a town, I needed to get someone who had a staff. He had it, and so I joined up with him. Now, I go about it looking at public funds and what can you do to save money. And I find that litigation takes on a life of its own. I know the history. You get a case. It goes to the trial department, in the trial apartment, just does whatever it has to do. Sometimes, if they're too busy, they do nothing, which is a mistake because people, we inherited a client where the particular firm that was doing it was asleep at the switch. They figured, oh, it's not a big rush job. It was an important town. And when we took it over, we found they did nothing on the case for four or five years, and our key witness was dead. So what I believe in doing is asking two questions of the town. And they should ask these questions, I should say. One, what's the likelihood of success? You need to know that because that's where you can wholly lawyer responsible. And two, what'll it cost me to get there? Now, somebody who's done this knows the likelihood of success pretty accurately, I'd say, with 95% of the time. And number two, they can give you a good cost estimate. They know who our opposing counsel would be, and they have a sense of it. And so once we get a case that is a go, the question is, how do we get rid of it? Because it takes on a life of its own. It just grows and grows and grows, and that eats up the budget. And it's great because it's easy money coming in. We don't have to bother with the selectmen. There's no night work. But it's the wrong way to do it. So what we look to do is to take a matter and to pretend it's our own matter. How do we get rid of it? How do we deal with it? How do we win it? What can we do to prevent it in the future with somebody at fault? And if they're at fault, maybe that's a standard thing that happens in this type of area. The question is, how can we train them so it doesn't? So we do work with training. We do work, we don't look to undo the staff. We look to helping the manager take a look at what's going on and where we can help. And we take our direction in quite a bit from your Chief Administrative Officer. And I admire the fact that you have kept him for as long as he has. It's very impressive, and I just, I don't like to go through towns and keep rotating out their executive director or whatever they call them. And it shows, Charlie's been around a long time, and he's great. And that's where you take the direction because you're already at step one. You don't have to worry about some new person coming in that doesn't know what they're doing or just want to make a big statement. And then, so the question is, what would I do if I were to become counsel, if our firm became counsel? I would take a look at all the litigation. I would analyze it, and this is at no cost to the town. I would, I have to be up to date, so I'd do it and find out, what should I do with it? Is it winnable? Is it a perfect opportunity to get rid of it? I came into a town not that far from you. It was Situate. And they had a caseload of about 45, 50 cases. And I said, "This is ridiculous for this town." I looked at it. So I said, "Would you authorize me to write a letter saying I'm a new kid on the block? Give me a best offer to get rid of it," or whatever it is, and I'm authorized, if it's within a reason, to do it. I got rid of two-thirds of the cases within two weeks. Many of them were telling me they were zoning. We couldn't find our client. So I made a motion to the space and get them done. So my sense is, I would go through each case personally and look at it and see what the likelihood of success is, what's happened, what we need to do, see if it's worth it, see if there's a way out, and pretend we're the new kids on the block. And I think that that's a value. Obviously, Paul and I would want to meet with the manager, your executive assistant, at no charge, just find out how we can, you know, what he looks forward to in serving the town and what problems he predicts for the future because that's very important to us, get ahead of it. So that's what we do, and we do it full-time. I don't have a private practice. It's nothing I miss. And I'm around, I'm in good health, and I'm around for as long as you'll keep me, if you hire us. And I'm here for you.
Answer most of my questions.
How many clients do you guys have in our area right now?
We're very choosy about our clients. Len mentioned that we don't try to represent the world. And so every client is important to us. And Halifax would be, I mean, we already represent Halifax, but we only are doing it around the edges. Halifax would be an important client. So I'm Town Counsel in Cohasset. 25 years. I'm Town Counsel in the town of Canton for 18 years. Town Counsel in the town of Mansfield for, I think it's, I had it in the, here, it's probably 15 years of some great length of time. I was 20 years Counsel for the town of Randolph. They went from a town to a city form of government, so we became outside Counsel to the town and still are outside Counsel to the town. So there are some smaller towns in there, but those are the main ones.
We look, they have representation on cell platforms. I just excuse my voice and want to change this. Why should we choose you?
Because we care. Particularly, we care about Halifax. So you would never be lost in a big firm. Number two, because I do the same things that you do, I know how to get it done. So perhaps to use an analogy, I'm like a running back who knows, in a football game, who knows how to weave through all these things and get into the end zone. There are so many places that you can get tripped up. And it's part of the municipal practice that things take a long time. It's part of municipal government. I know as a Select Board Member, I decided to push for cell towers in our community so people could have cell phones. In particular, a guy had died of a heart attack, and he was trying to call 911, and there was no reception. So I wanted to have cellphone coverage. To have that, you have to have towers. Well, that took me 10 years to do that. I had to go to the Legislature twice. I had to go to Town Meeting three times. I had, I got sued by neighbors, people who are opposed to it. But at the end of the day, we got it done. And when you go through that process, I know how to do these things, and I know how to, I mean, you learn. It's one thing being a lawyer where you get paid to defend a lawsuit. It's another thing when you're a Select Board Member and you have to consider all the parts of the process, everything from going to the Legislature to, including a lawsuit. And you try and keep the bigger picture. Keep your eye on the end zone and getting the touchdown. It's a different, it's a different skill set. So we're not just offering legal services. We're offering practicality. We're offering effectiveness.
How readily available are you?
24/7.
So if something happens at a 7:00 at night selectmen's meeting, we're able to reach out?
Yeah.
What's the best way to reach out to you? Email, phone? What's going to be our contact with you?
So at first, I got called like at 11:15 at night. You know, "Should we be going into executive session to discuss this item?" I take the phone call. Phone calls, texts, emails are your choice. We try, the advantage of somebody like myself who's done this for so many years is that we don't have to say to you, "You have a crisis. You call me at 7:00 at night." I don't, you're not going to get an answer saying, "I'm going to research it. I'm going to put a young guy on it who's going to look at it for two weeks. We'll get back to you next month." I'm able to tell you what to do right then and there. Here's what you should do here, how you should proceed in order to deal with the reason why you're calling me at 7:00 at night. It's obviously an issue in front of you, and you want to know what to do. A lot of the questions we get are ethics questions. So we'll get a call saying, "I have this issue. Can I vote on it?" We're voting on it in three minutes. And again, it's not the kind of thing where I can assign a younger lawyer to look at it and figure it out. I deal with the ethics issues all the time. I'm dealing with the State Ethics Commission. I'm in contact with them multiple times per week. I'll give you an answer right then and there. Here's what you need to do to protect yourself. And I'll tell you whether you can participate in the vote or not participate in the vote right then and there, right before the meeting, timely. So I think we can be quite effective and quite available and quite responsive.
I'd like to say, if I can, I agree with them entirely because I've had, I had a 2:00 call in the morning. The high school was on fire, and there was a crisis. And I ran over there, and I'm glad I did.
What is your practice or experience with dealing with conflicts among Town Boards, Committees, and Officials?
It's ironic to me that most of the time when you're trying to get something done, you get tackled by your own team. If you use, again, a football analogy, I'm sorry I keep using football analogies, but many times, you get the ball, you think, "Oh, here I am, going to run to the end zone." And it's your own team that tackles you, not really the opposition. We deal with that conflict all the time. We try to build consensus. There are some boards that people don't talk to each other, except through me. So they will call me up, and they'll say, "Would you tell so-and-so, 'Here's what I think should happen.'" And so I become...
The middle man.
The filter is the word I want to use. I try not to make, get involved in making the policy, but I sure can filter out some of the strong language that people would use when they're having difficulty communicating with each other. I can be that cadmium rod in the nuclear reactor to kind of absorb the energy and calm things down and get people talking again. Because again, I've been on your side of the table. I know what it's like to be in a conflict. But there's three of you, and you've got to get yourselves to the point where you've got two in favor of something. And if you're not all getting along, I can help.
Troy?
Not further.
Okay. Is there anything else you guys wanted to say?
Gordon, may I ask some questions?
Sure.
Do you have any preferences as to how requests for legal assistance are made? Should the requests be made through the Board of Selectmen, or at least with the Board's approval? Should other Boards, Committees, and Officials have other open access to Town Counsel without going through the Board or a gatekeeper?
So what we like is what we call, we have the system we developed called Requests for Legal Services. And it's a piece of paper called RL-USSes. And we'd like it to be signed off by either the select, a member of the Select Board or the Town Administrator. It's important that there be some internal controls because we don't want, if there's a fight going on between, let's say, one Board and another Board, we don't want to be giving, being asked to do contradictory things by different Town Officials. We want it all sorted out internally. So if someone says, "We want you to go after the Board of Selectmen," and the Board of Selectmen says, "We want to go after that Board," well, wait a second. Why go after anybody? We want to know who you want us to represent, who you want, and what you want to accomplish. At the end of the day, we know that you are the Chief Executive Officers of the town, so we're going to be looking to the Board for guidance about where to go on issues. And we'd like it to be run through your office so Town Administrator knows the players and knows where we can be most effective.
What procedures would you have to help the town reduce its legal bills, not just involving those with litigation, but also when requests for information are made?
So Len has already talked about the idea of our doing what I would call like a physical examination for you. We'd go through all your litigation matters to see what we can do to fix things. In terms of other ways of control costs, we don't spend your money on research projects and younger people learning municipal law practice by writing these law review-type memos. Both Len and I have been around long enough to know the answer. We've seen it before.
We make our money when they don't follow what we tell them.
We make our money when they don't follow what we tell them.
That's right.
Which I will get to in a minute.
Yeah, we tell you not to do something and you get sued, but then we'll still defend you.
We, we, we prefer, I mean, just to give you an example, I might get a state ethics question. And, and some of them are complex. And I would normally, unless it's something in emergency, refer them to the State Ethics Commission because I would tell them, hey, look, I can give you an answer, but it ain't good for 30 days. You know, you have to send it in and all that happy stuff. So it's a practical matter. Why don't you just go directly there and you'll be safe. But here's what I, here's the way I couch it. This is what you want to do. And so I give them a two or three minutes. And to be honest with you, I've never put down a point one. It's not worth the effort. So anytime I can do something quickly, I don't charge. Most, most town councils shouldn't. I mean, just, it's, it doesn't, doesn't, it's more bookkeeping than it has to go to somebody else's type of, it's just not worth it.
What do you see during the last few years as the most frequent errors that communities are making concerning the open meeting law? And obviously with the pandemic, things got very weird. The laws and regulations concerning public documents and the state ethics laws. And what actions would you take to help reduce the chances that employees and officials in Halifax would make the same mistakes?
What I've seen is the use of emails and the use of, of discussions is particularly hard. When I first was a, elected a select board member, I was on a three-person board. And now I'm on a five-person board. But when you're on a three-person board, essentially none of you can talk to each other. When you're on a five-person board, two of you can talk to each other. It's, it's actually more comfortable with five than it is with three. So when you're, you're three, you're more vulnerable to being accused of things. I recall once we had an event over, it was a social event, but I was chairman of the board and I, you know, sat at a table and my colleagues joined me. And so we're all sitting at the table and we were talking, we're actually talking about the Patriots, because we're all Patriots fans. And then I looked up and there was the town clerk. And I said, hi, you want to join us? And she says, no, I'm taking minutes of your Because when you have three, it's so obvious when you're talking to each other in so many different ways. So you're, you're quite vulnerable. When you have five, literally you can be seen talking to one other. But if the public sees two of you together, they infer the worst, that you're hatching some scheme.
Do you guys provide any training?
Yes.
So if we had all the boards and committees come in, you'd be willing to do training on open meeting, ethics, and other types of issues like that?
Do that?
Yes.
What's your overall philosophy about litigation involving the town? And does it change depending on whether the town is the plaintiff or the defendant in a case?
Well, if it's the plaintiff, I mean, we, it, it obviously would probably go through you, but the board would have to vote to do something. And so you, you hopefully would have a three-person board voting in favor of yourself. And what we would still, we'd like to be called in to see if there are ways before you get to that stage of settling it. Because litigation gets expensive. It just drags on and on and on. So I don't know what the speed is that you need. So basically, it would be in your interest to get us involved as early as possible and try to work something out. If you're sued, that's an easier issue for town council. You take a look at the suit, deny everything, of course, basically, and then go back and start studying and seeing how, how this happened and what's going on. And what court is it in? Is it in the right court? And what's our likelihood of success? And what will it cost? And then find out from you, work with you to figure if there's an avenue to get rid of it. The last thing you want to do is litigate a case out. I mean, I've litigated some to the end. And even if you win, it's, you know, it's not going to be fast and it's, and it's going to cost money. So I try desperately to, you know, we, we don't get our jollies by sending big bills out to towns. It just doesn't work.
So that's about it for time, but would you guys like to make any closing remarks?
The way I would describe us, so that you can distinguish between us and the other firms, is that we add a dimension of practicality that no other firm can add. Because we're in the trenches, the same as you. Because we worked for Halifax in the past, we know the town. We're very fond of the town. And you know our loyalty. You know that we care. And that would be the last thing that I would add, that this is not a job for us. This is a, our passion is trying to make governments work and work well. So we care.
Thank you both very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Paul.
Nice to see you. How many years have you been on?
He may be in the...
Thirty-one. Thirty-one. Well, I'm going to catch up with you one day. I'm, I'm four behind you, but I'm working on it.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
You can move them around. We do need the mics when you're speaking.
Okay.
Yeah, it's for the outside feed.
Yes.
It's not for the PA in here. So for people hearing here, you need to speak loud.
Sure.
You need to speak in the mic.
Perfect.
Thank you guys for coming in today. Do you want to tell us a little bit about your firm or about yourselves?
Sure. My name is Lisa Mead. I'm here with my partner Jay Talaman and my other partner Kate Fedoroff. Our firm was formed in 2004 with an, actually somebody you're familiar with, Mark Bobrowski, who's doing here at Land Use, your zoning rewrite right now, I think. Mark and I formed a municipal law firm that focused mostly on land use law. I'm a former mayor of the city of Newburyport. And when I was mayor, I had my city solicitor come in to work with my department heads on a regular basis, like a monthly basis. So there was some cohesion with the legal services that were provided to the city and, and our day-to-day work. And we didn't feel like we were always out, reaching out to somebody, kind of fluttering in, but they were part of a team. And so when Mark and I started our firm, I wanted to make sure that when we set up legal services for municipalities, we tried to do it in that way as well. So we wanted to add council back to the term town council, as opposed to just your lawyer that kind of parachutes in every once in a while. So in 2004, we mostly did land use law, special council work. But in 2007, we got our first municipal town council job with the town of Ashland, which we're still town council in proudly. And I'm looking forward to seeing them again in person for the first time in a long time next week. And Jay joined us shortly thereafter. And we just started to be able to, we became town council in a number of other communities. Kingston actually was our next community that we became town council in. We now represent 23 municipalities as town council. And we're special town council in probably a dozen other municipalities at any given time, doing special council work, depending on whether it's land use or special procurement matters, general contracting, things of that nature, in addition to labor law, which is the department that Kate heads up. So the idea for the firm was to, to be able to provide services, to provide preventive services to a municipality and not just be reactionary to a municipality. That way it saves the municipality money in the end. And hopefully you make better decisions because you can have a conversation about it in advance. And so we believe that Mead Talaman-Costa, which Jay's going to talk a little bit more about our firm, is, has been able to accomplish that with our towns. And I think that if you reach out to any of our municipal managers or department heads, they would tell you that, in fact, we're part of the team. And we help alleviate a number of those emergencies down the road by being a part of the conversation in the beginning as policy is being developed. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jay.
Sure. So I joined in late 2006. I was a partner at Copelman and Page, now KP Law. And like Lisa, I was a, and still am a town official. I'm the moderator in my town. I've been on a bunch of boards. And I felt like Lisa and Mark that we should be, we could offer a model where we'd be, again, fostering that team approach, where you would go to us before a problem arise to prevent the most expensive part of council services, which is litigation on the back end. The challenge was, how do we go about providing these models? If we're there more on the front side, there is an expense to that too. And we wanted to take away the barrier of a town official thinking about, oh, my gosh, I can't pick up the phone. It's March. We're already burned through three quarters of our legal budget and we have to save it for town meeting. What are we going to do? We really need help. So what we developed was a set of different ways of coming about it. Part of that is on Lisa's end a little bit, where she provides this uniform series of contracts and other documents. So to, to help on the contracts and more the day-to-day administrative stuff. The rest of it was, we developed a series of flat fees. And there's all the, tons of shades of gray, but you have two of them before you. And what they are is a kind of a, a measurement of what the expected legal budget would be. And it does, accomplishes two things. One, it provides uniformity and predictability. So you just pay us a set amount every month. That includes some office hours where we can get to meet and work with your team. It includes three board meetings a month. It includes endless opinions, contract work, attendance at town meeting, all, conducting seminars, all of that stuff. It also, in one of them, includes all traditional land use, litigation, enforcement of your local bylaws, everything that normally comes to bear. So it's a way to provide all that stuff without worrying. You pay the same amount every month. Now, some months, the bear eats us and some months we eat the bear because around town meeting season, we're working for a low amount. But maybe in the summer, we catch up. And it averages across all those towns. So it works for us. It really works for the communities we represent because they almost never go over budget. At the same time, litigation goes down because we are working with your boards because it doesn't cost anything extra. Let's say you had a shopping mall or a large housing development, a 40B or something else in the town. We would work on it with them, help avoid problems. But if a problem does arise out of a project like that and you have to litigate, or you feel that you owe it to your constituents and voters to litigate, you're not necessarily tied to the almighty legal budget because it's included in one, in the higher flat fee. Or you can opt for the one that doesn't include the litigation, where you can measure those things yourself. So towns like that because sometimes, again, late in the year, they want to fight something that they really don't like and they don't want to be constrained by that. So if a principal's involved, it doesn't cost any extra. It's been really successful. It's been good for us. It's been good for the towns. It helps provide some predictability. It's easier for someone like Charlie, who's got to manage a, a budget throughout the fiscal year. So it, it really has been a boon for towns. And that model, and again, in various shades of gray, have worked for a lot of our towns, some of which still choose the hourly rate, but a lot of whom are moving towards something more modern in terms of legal services. And I'll let Kate fill in some of the other things that we try and do.
Right. So my history is, when I was brought on board, I was the senior assistant solicitor in, in Brockton, so fairly close to you all. And the idea was to broaden the practice, to make it a comprehensive, all-inclusive firm. Because in the city of Brockton, though I do general municipal work, I was the lead counsel for all our labor employment matters. So I took on that role here in, at MTC as well. And we represent several communities on labor employment as well as general municipal work. In addition, we've expanded our, our focus. And I also do marijuana, which is a strange combination, labor and employment and marijuana. But it just goes to show you that we're constantly evolving and trying to broaden our capacity so that we can provide you full, full service. We've recently adapted to constraints relative to COVID. And I headed up a lot of the strategies that were necessarily, necessary to quickly implement in light of the pandemic. So we're, we're an evolving practice. And we'd like to bring that knowledge to you and that energy to this town as well.
Okay. Troy?
I don't understand. You're doing so well. Why do you own Halifax? Why do you want to be council here?
So let me see if I can tackle that. So this is going to sound a little geeky, but we really like this stuff. I mean, I've, I've been a town official on half a dozen boards in my town. I, I enjoy the practice of municipal law. I have a ton of law school classmates who make a ton more than me, working at big downtown law firms, corporate law firms. This practice is fun to us. We like being with the clients. We like working on projects. We represent a number of communities in the area. We've got, we're town council in Kingston, Easton, we're on the Cape, we're down in Berkeley. We represent Duxbury and Situate on a special council basis. We like the area. It's enjoyable to us. I mean, it's a living too, don't get me wrong. But this is something that we've all chosen to do. We've opted not to go the other direction. We like this practice law.
And, and I would just add to that, Mr. Gern, that, you know, we're not, we, let's say we don't sit on our laurels, right? We don't take anything for granted. And so we want to continue servicing the communities that we serve as well. But when, we would like to serve more communities. It's what, as Jay said, it's really what we like to do. And so when opportunities arise, we like to try to take advantage of those opportunities.
I, I would only add that one of the reasons why I became a municipal lawyer is the breadth of the work. So every day, I go into work with a plan of all the things that I'm going to do. And that gets blown up about 9:35 because there's always a crisis somewhere, right? And, and it could be anything ranging from a procurement issue that we're opening bids today and we need this answer by noon time, to I have an employee who's, who's injured, to any host of things. And for us, that's the super exciting part of municipal law, that every day is a different basket of challenges. Whereas some lawyers really like to do the same thing. You know, they might do a contract and they do that same exact contract 10 times a day. That's not something that would interest me. And I know it's not something that interests them. It's part of the exciting part. The very challenging part is having to address unique issues every single day that you may never have seen before. So we think adding on a new community would also add to that aspect.
How accessible would you be to us to be able to answer questions quickly? I, I mean, it seems like you offer a lot, which is great. You offer it to a lot of people. How would we be able to get ahold of you? And how quickly would we be able to get answers? You know, if we need stuff done and you have one of your crisis situations, what happens next?
Sure. So...
Oh, go ahead.
So one of the things that I think is a hallmark, hallmark of our firm is our responsiveness. And so you're going to, the town will be assigned a lead attorney, and in this case, it's going to be Jay, and an immediate backup, which would be Kate. And no matter what, you can always call Jay. And if Jay's not available, then Kate's going to know what's going on in the town. And whether it's email or voicemail, somebody's going to get back to you. And it may be, I've got somebody looking at that. I'll get right back to you and I'm going to get your answer. And so as you note from our proposal, we have 12 attorneys with us right now. We have two offices, one in Millis, one up in Newburyport. But everything, you know, given the internet and whatnot, you know, we can work anywhere at any time. And we've all learned that obviously in the last year. So I think if you speak to any of our... So I think if you speak to any of our current clients, they would tell you that one of the things that they like most about the firm is our responsiveness. And so we are accessible immediately, I would say, to you.
The other thing I'd add to that is, we're not sitting pat. We, as I mentioned to Charlie in an email yesterday, we're adding attorneys. Constantly, we have another one coming on later in the summer. We just are adding another office with a lease to start late summer in New Bedford to better serve our South Coast and Cape clients. So we're growing. As our client needs grow, we grow. We take on different specialists and we take on different practice areas, and we're not afraid to grow and take on the expenses we need to serve appropriately and respond quickly to our clients.
So you would always be our direct contact? How does your process work? If we call you at something, are you going to give it to one of those other attorneys? Are we going to hear from a different attorney on different things? Or are you or Kate always going to be the direct contact?
So generally, it's good practice, we find, for Kate and I to be in the loop on everything. But there are other specialists in the firm. Lisa is a procurement and contract specialist. We have someone who is an ethics specialist, and we have our head litigator, or one of our other partners, Mike Keneffek, is our head litigator. Regardless of who you are speaking to on a day-to-day basis on a particular matter, Kate and I would be involved on a high level. So you would have an operate, it doesn't have to always filter, but there'll always be a partner in charge of what you're doing. So we've got, we are six partners now out of the 12, and there'll always be a partner in charge of the specific matter. So I don't do as much procurement, and I might pass a large contract over to Lisa, but Kate and I will still be involved in the background and be prepared to do it. So it's not just us, but we would be the point of contact so we can maintain the range of communication for the town.
Right. So what we want to make sure of is you don't have to chase somebody down. That's really the goal, is that we have the point of contact, so we make sure we get the work done, but you know, you can call one person, you don't have to say, oh, now who in the firm was handling that, right? That's our responsibility. But if Charlie or a department head or yourself wanted to contact somebody specifically, no problem.
And adding one thing that is a little bit separate, but I think related, is apart from accessibility, you know, I'll take a phone call or someone will call my cellphone at 8 o'clock at night, and if I'm not in a meeting, I'm going to answer. But I think the other piece that is attractive about our firm is approachability. And part of what we like to do is nurture those relationships, whether it be through office hours, that we get to know the department heads. So they don't think of us as being an unapproachable attorney, that, you know, they have to figure out who to call and whatnot. We become part of that team, so people feel comfortable approaching us.
So I want to, I actually want to give a recent example of this. And please, I don't encourage this, but it happens and it has to happen. Sunday morning, I get up, I'm an early bird, right? So Sunday morning, I'm up and I'm actually doing work. It's about 6:10, and I get a text from one of my town managers, right? And I respond to it, and it's a really important matter because they had something happening on Monday they needed to resolve that just literally came up. I then reached out to Kate because it had to do with a labor issue. And Kate responded to me. We got the document that they needed to have and for the next hour, had conversations with this town manager and took care of his issue, but he felt comfortable enough to be able to text me on Sunday morning to get his answer.
And I'm not an early bird, so I responded this way. I did respond. I eventually opened both eyes.
How do you like our requests to come through? So if there are other boards and other departments that are requesting legal counsel, would you want the board's approval or what's your process there, where you're talking about your process?
So we've got 23 towns as town council, and each of them have shades of gray on how they want to do that. It's really an internal policy question. I think frequently, it works with boards other than the select board. So the boards beneath the select board would have to go through your administrator or your board or whatever you, so that we're not getting questions on something that the select board, who are ultimately our bosses, that they don't want to see answered because we are most betrothed to the select board. So a single source can work for some towns. That said, we're always responsive to members of the select board, and we're open to other ideas on how to do that. The caveat I would give is that, let's say we have an ongoing public hearing before the Conservation Commission that we're working on. Once permission has been given to the Conservation Commission to use us at that hearing and helping drafting a decision and evaluating other things, it's usual and fair for the chairperson or some, whoever else is in charge, maybe a conservation agent, to contact us directly during the course of that matter. But these things are always subject to local policy likes and dislikes, and there, again, can be some differences in how different towns approach it. But we very often see assignments coming through one central point, often a town manager or a town administrator.
Okay. And what's your practice with dealing with boards and committees and officials that are having conflict? So two boards that disagree or?
That's mostly what we do.
Not just our town.
So the single most common example, aside from, and I'm leaving aside, select board, maybe having concerns about a board beneath it that may be going in a direction that doesn't fit their policy goals. The single most common example we see is when a zoning board issues a decision that the planning board doesn't agree with, and there can often be an appeal. Those are difficult situations. Ultimately, which side we take really depends upon which side the select board wants us to take on those issues. Because that's a policy question at a higher level, whereas that can only be decided by our ultimate board that we're most betrothed to, which, again, is the select board. Sometimes, however, there's an opportunity for us, again, with direction from the town administrator or the select board, say, see if you can work it out between these boards. Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't. But again, that, to Kate's point, that kind of, when we have office hours, when we're there more often at board meetings, we can usually find a way to tether these boards together through our help to help them be on the same page. Doesn't always work. Sometimes it's cats and dogs between boards. But, you know, we try our best to help towns build bridges between their officials and work more closely through us if we can.
So during those office hours, do you guys offer any type of training to our board members?
Separate from the office hours, so we will do, in fact, I've just scheduled one in July with one of my boards, an open meeting law training. So, you know, depending on what it is, we'll offer conflict of interest law training, land use law training, open meeting law training, public records law training. If it's a conflict of interest law training, for example, and open meeting law, we might offer a session during the day so employees can attend, and then that evening, offer the same session for volunteers and volunteer boards. So we would schedule it not just during office hours, because that might not be convenient, but at a time that would be convenient, that you would be able to get the most attendance.
But you're free to use our time. I mean, if we're going to come from monthly office hours, and however, whether you do it by appointment or drop-in or however you want to design it, and a board chair or a board member wants to drop in and says, there's just something I don't understand, can you help me with it at the office hours? Sure.
Yeah.
In those office hours, we do other things, too. Like we have a big, again, a 40B project coming. Can you, during your office hours, can you walk that site with us, with our conservation agents, so they can understand the full scope of what they may be facing on this? However you want to structure and whatever kinds of advice or counsel you want during those office hours, we're happy to give them. Some caveats are that we don't like to give a legal opinion to a single member of a board without knowing whether or not the whole board wants that opinion. We might help them, like if it's a conflict of interest thing that's unique to that board member, or provide educational advice on, no, the law actually says this. But if it's a more complex opinion that the whole board hasn't asked, we don't want to be giving an opinion to a single member that may conflict with the opinion that the majority of that particular board wants. So there are some practical limitations, but by and large, we're an open book at these office hours and with respect to the three meetings per month that we offer.
Gordon, do you have any questions?
I think I'm good right now. Troy?
Yeah, Charlie? So we've gone over a couple of things. In the last few years, what are the most frequent areas that communities and municipal officials make concerning open meeting law, the laws and regulations concerning public documents, and the state ethics laws? And what actions would you take to help reduce the chances that employees and officials in Halifax would make the same mistakes?
So we offer these trainings, for sure, and particularly during the office hours when these issues come up. Let's say you've had a spate of public records requests and it's not, they're not being answered, then we would offer training to that staff, those staff people, or help set them up systems to help address public records requests that come in. If there's a particular board or commission that's having a problem with their open meeting law issues, we would provide specific advice to that board or commission. You know, it's amazing, these issues are constant and they cost the town a lot of time and money. And so our goal is to try to address those and nip them in the bud as soon as possible to try to cut off any future problems if we can.
What's your overall philosophy about litigation involving the town? And does it change depending on whether the town or is the plaintiff or the defendant in a case?
So the philosophy versus the model of providing services are kind of two different shades. So as I talked about before, in terms of providing litigation services, again, the select board is going to make any high-level decisions as to how they want to either pursue litigation or defend litigation, and we're responsive to those kinds of high-level policy questions. On the cost side of that, again, we feel that our model provides you with the freedom to choose how to make those decisions without regard to the almighty dollar, provided that it's particular general enforcement or defense or prosecution of land use or general bylaw things. In terms of otherwise, a philosophy on litigation, we will aggressively pursue whatever you want to pursue, either by way of defense or prosecution of something. There are some cases where it, it's a simple defense, we don't have to throw a lot into it, a defense of a simple zoning matter. But again, each case has its own particular bent to it and importance to the town. We'll certainly engage in a robust discussion during executive session to help, to the extent that the town is unsure of the various avenues and risks and benefits of each particular strategy. Again, executive sessions are within the meeting schedule that we provide under the flat thing, flat fees. As lawyers who value confidentiality, we really value executive session. And we think that a lot of high-level discussions happen there, and we are happy to lay out all the risks and benefits, whether it's good news or bad news. We might meet in an exec session and say, listen, this one's a loser. We are never going to be the law firm that paints a rosier picture than it should be because we don't want to see you go down that road. There are law firms who will always say, fight, 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 and this is worth fighting for, even if it's not, especially when there's an hourly rate at the end of the tunnel. That's not us. You're going to hear it from us straight, but if there's multiple options, you'll hear that from us, too, within the confines of your exec session.
Right. Gordon, I think we're out of time.
So I guess, yeah, I just had one more question. So if the town signed on with a flat rate system with you guys and the town doesn't take your advice and chooses to defend something or not to defend something, is that going to change, I guess, the model with you guys on whether or not?
No.
No. You get to make that choice as the client, and we understand that. And, you know, you, we may have, we may, in executive session, say, and in fact, I've had this recently with a town, I was really clear with them, you know, your likelihood of success on the merits on this is not good, but they had a philosophical issue that they really wanted to press. And so in executive session, we're going to be really straight with you about what your chances are. You make the decision, we walk out of that door, it's the best case we've ever had.
And there's two, there's two areas there where I think I should give some further explanation. So let's use the 40B example again. We know that towns lose 40B cases a lot. The law is tilted drastically in favor of developers for 40B, same as Dover, men in uses, educational, religious, agricultural. Let's say there's a project in any of those categories that comes up, and it ends up in litigation. We will state clearly during an executive session, these are hard to win. We don't have even a 50% chance of winning. But again, this is where the model comes into play. Sometimes those cases are still important to fight, and if the state is going to overrule us, then the states can overrule us, but we felt we owed it to our constituents to fight it. That's what our model provides, that others don't, because litigation is very expensive. The only caveat I want to give is that we have an ethical responsibility to the courts. So if a case has 0% chance and is viewed, could be viewed by the courts as frivolous, we have to be mindful of that because the courts won't allow us to defend. Now, none of the categories that I mentioned could ever be frivolous. They might not be winners, but they're not frivolous. And we would be straight with you on that. That would very rarely occur. But we're mindful of certain statutory schemes where towns struggle in litigation. But that doesn't mean the fight isn't worth fighting. And that's what our model, as opposed to a lot of hourly models, provides.
We are out of time, but I want to thank you guys very much for coming in.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got Jason Rollins.
Good morning.
How are you, sir?
Should I sit in the middle? There's three seats.
You can pull the.
Do I get to use both microphones?
And if you want.
It's just me. All right. How are you?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good. Great.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and about your firm?
Sure. Sure. As you guys just heard, and I'm sure you heard from both firms before me, based on my knowledge of both of them, they're both excellent firms and do a nice job, but I'm a very different situation. I am what I would consider to be truly a local town attorney or town council. I actually, this building is on 499 Plymouth Street. I actually grew up at 1115 Plymouth Street on 106, on the Bridgewater, East Bridgewater line. I went to Bridgewater-Ranham High School. I can tell you that I am a very active member of your community in particular. I've been volunteering with your senior center for probably close to 10 years. I think maybe even received an award here or there for doing a lot of volunteer work in this community. I am currently the managing partner of a small law firm in Bridgewater on Route 18. Took me about 12 and a half minutes, I think, to get here from my office, called Rollins ASAP. My wife is my law partner, and my, of council is my father-in-law, who's been a lawyer for about 50 years, I think, close to 50 years, and he would be my backup. He's not here today because I figured I'm going to be the main person you're going to be working with, so you want to hear from the person you're going to have a direct contact with, because that's what my representation as a town council is really all about. It's about personal relationships. I'm currently the town attorney for the town of Bridgewater. I've been the town attorney for the town of Bridgewater for about three and a half years, but I've been the associate town attorney before that for about eight, give or take, I'm trying to think, maybe total, maybe six and then three and a half, somewhere in that range. I have been through three town managers. I've been through a transition of government there from selectmen to town council. I'm familiar with both forms of town government. I'm familiar with infrastructures of many different types of government, and somehow I've been able to survive all that time. And I think it's probably because of the personal relationships that I forge with the people that are on the boards. years, but I've been the associate town attorney before that for about eight, give or take, I'm trying to think, maybe total, maybe six and then three and a half, somewhere in that range. I have been through three town managers. I've been through a transition of government there from selectmen to town council. I'm familiar with both forms of town government. I'm familiar with infrastructures of many different types of government. And somehow, I've been able to survive all that time. And I think it's probably because of the personal relationships that I forge with the people that are on the boards, the committees, the select boards, the town council, the town managers. And I think that that above everything else, throw out the pay structure, throw out, to some degree, multiple attorneys in big Boston firms, throw that out the door when it comes to local town governance. You all know that firsthand. I don't need to tell you. I don't need to come here and read to you Mass General Law's 40A, because that's not what you all do. That's not what this job that you have been entrusted is about, right? It's about the people in your community. All of you are here because you care about your community and you want to work towards making this community better, and you want to surround yourself with people that care about this community. And so that's where I think my representation sets me apart. And I think my resume will speak for itself as it relates to my experience. It is extensive. I've tried cases in nearly every court in Massachusetts, including bankruptcy court. I've handled pretty much any municipal matter you could imagine. By all means, check my reference, the town manager for the town of Bridgewater. You can go back and check the prior town managers for the towns of Bridgewater. I don't think you'll hear anything different than that. I handle everything. I handle personnel issues, I handle advising boards and committees, I handle advising town managers, I handle, in your case, it will be the select board, in my case, in the town of Bridgewater, town council members. I am kind of the start and the finish as the town attorney in Bridgewater. And as you all know, it's a fairly big town. It's fairly busy practice. My payment there is on a salary basis. I thought, based on what you all had put out in your RFP, that might not be something you have an appetite for. I can tell you that the idea of payment is secondary to me. I'm happy to work within whatever parameters you all set. Your budget is $125,000, give or take, for the legal department. I currently make a salary of $75,000, and I handle the entire legal department. So just to put in perspective, I've argued cases in front of the appellate court, I've tried cases, I'm in the middle of several litigation matters. That's all within that same dollar figure. I've run the department, I've outsourced things, I've run trainings on open meeting laws, I've run trainings on zoning. I, in addition, the way our government is set up, every other Tuesday, we have what's essentially our version of a town meeting, all right? So the town council form of government has a strong town manager, and then it has town counselors. So our town counselors are the representative body of our town, all right? We still have elections, and we still have things that the town counselors would like to throw onto the ballot. But every other Tuesday night, I'm there doing the things that I would be expected to do at an annual town meeting. I'm drafting legislation, which would be equivalent to your articles on your warrant. And I'm doing this every other Tuesday. I'm advising the counselors in session, live in session, me personally, I'm there with them every step of the way. So I think that's kind of something about me and about what I can offer you all that's different. I know that you're also interviewing someone else. I think that's been your local town council for some time. So he probably has a local bent to him as well. Everyone has something unique. And really, what it comes down to, what I believe it comes down to from you all, and in my experience doing this, is what you're looking for, right? I am not a Boston law firm. That is, that's not what I am. That's not how I work, that's, they have a different process. Some people, some towns really love that. And that's a model that you all have to decide if you want or don't want. I am much more about, as I expressed at the beginning, personal relationships, being a part of the community, being active in the community, talking to people, helping solve problems before they become bigger than what they are, all right? And in small towns, which while Bridgewater's bigger, is still a small town, I spend a lot of time solving problems before they become problems. And I think that's kind of the name of the game in small-town governance. But that's who I am, that's what I am. I am an open book, so I'm completely open to whatever questions or comments or concerns you all may have for me.
Troy?
Well, you pretty much laid it out, but you say the bigger firms are, well, you didn't say were useless, that you don't need them because they're not local.
No, the bigger firms are great. I'm not, no, I'm saying what I offer is different. They're certainly not useless. They, every, every select board or town council has to decide what their priorities are, right? And everyone, it's just like meeting a spouse, right? Sometimes there's a great fit for a certain scenario in a relationship, and sometimes there isn't. My point was, I'm something different than that. I'm not a big Boston law firm. I am not a firm of 12 to 15 people. If you pick up the phone, you're going to talk to me every single time. You're not going to talk to anyone else. So if you have a relationship with me, it's going to be with me. And so that's different, right? I'm not saying it's better or worse, it's all based on a fit. Maybe that's not what you all are looking for, but that's what I can offer.
So to kind of piggyback on what you just said.
Yeah.
First, I think it's phenomenal that you can work with your wife and your in-laws.
I've been with her since driver's education, and we met at Bridgewater-Ranham. So we really are local people, like these areas, we are local. We've kept our practices around, we service the community, yes.
That's great.
Thanks.
As far as your availability to us.
Yes.
You had mentioned that you're salaried in Bridgewater.
I am.
Do you have set hours there? Are you not going to be available to us certain times, that type of situation?
That's a great question. So I have intentionally waited for an opportunity like this. I have kept my eye on openings in only a couple of small communities around where I live and where I practice for this very reason. I am very capable of handling the workload of two municipalities, based on my level of experience, based on my ability to answer questions quickly and efficiently, just because over the course of many years as a town attorney, I now know things that I don't have to look up, right? Back maybe 10 years ago, I'd have to look something, but it's not like that anymore. So I intentionally picked another small community around me because I knew I would be able to give what I want to give to that community. You can check every website there is in the world. I've only applied to one other community other than yours at any other point in time, and I've always worked in Bridgewater. And that's been intentional. I am not, you are not going to go online and see me having these interviews in every community that opens up. That's because I came here because I want to work here.
What is your experience with working in the town with maybe boards or employee board members that are having a conflict?
So a big, a conflict of interest or a conflict like an argument type?
Either or.
Okay.
Wait, I think we can...
Probably both.
Probably both, all right. So conflicts of interest, I will tell you, come up all the time. I spend many days and hours working on advising my boards and committees about conflicts of interest. I've tried to head that off by creating programs by which I have them come in, and we sit them down, and we train them on conflicts of interest law. But it is a notoriously difficult area of law for people that are volunteering to conceptualize at times. So I am, I do try to be proactive about it. I often do find myself on a one-to-one basis counseling people about it, and I think they've been very appreciative of it. You know, I had a town council recently, who was the president of our town council, say to me, you know, it was great to be able to have you directly. I had your cell phone, I gave you a buzz before the meeting, we solved something before it ever became a problem. That's the kind of town attorney that I am. The conflict as it relates to boards is a very difficult situation. As indicated in the firm that interviewed before me, and I totally agree with this notion, you all as the select board make the determination about where my representation goes, all right? So that's the first, so you all are kind of in charge of that. What I try to do is, before it becomes your problem, is talk to the people that are involved individually. Again, the chairman of every board in Bridgewater will tell you they have my cell phone number. I talk to them individually about these issues, and I'm, I've been able to...
Knock on...
Something?
I've been able to prevent a lot of things before they became issues by having those conversations, right? I feel, in my opinion, and I feel this way about relationships, and I feel this way about life, communication is the most important thing with practicing law, with having a relationship, with running a successful business, communication. The lack of communication leads to mistrust, leads to the idea of collusion, leads to the things that people find ugly in government. And so I think it's all about those personal relationships. I think it's all about that communication. And that's why I started this by telling you that's what I'm about. That's what I have to offer you.
So I know you're local, and to bring back the whole how accessible you are to us.
Yes.
Are we able to call, email, text anytime?
Yes.
24/7? If something comes up and there's an emergency meeting or something of that nature, are we able to?
Yes.
Call you and say, hey, we might need you here at noon today? Or?
Yes.
In a court or in somewhere for us?
100%, and you don't ever have to take my word for that. I know your town administrator knows my town manager, I think, fairly well. He could, you can ask him any day of the week if he picked up the phone, if I would respond. I do. And I'm, and it's about communication. And you, your job as a town attorney is to prevent the fires before they start. It's great to be able to put out the fires, but it costs you all a lot more for me to put out a fire than to stop, than to prevent it before it starts. And that comes back to that communication.
I think you kind of touched on the fact that you do offer training.
Yes.
For members and committees.
And I will tell you, it's a little strange. So I hate doing, I, RFPs are crazy because it puts you in a box. And I don't look at the way I practice as being in this box, like I have to do things hourly, I have to do things salary, I have... So with trainings, that's the kind of thing that I would give a town for free, because at the end of the day, doing that one hour, driving 10 minutes to come do a free training for you all to understand open meeting law, or zoning, or some issue like that, is immensely valuable to you, and it makes my job easier at the end of the day. So that's the kind of thing that, yes, I absolutely would offer. You can probably just write it down that I wouldn't charge for it, because it, I'm very... Go ahead, yeah. And I'm good, even if you were to talk to a private client of mine, right? I will, I will zealously advocate for my clients, but I'm also, I think, realistic, and I think I also am very fair about how I bill people.
Troy? All right.
Okay, ready to go?
I'm good right now. Charlie, do you want to ask a question?
Um, during the last few years, and obviously, given it's Bridgewater, but you may have heard of cases in other communities since information among city and town council gets passed around.
Right.
What are the most frequent areas that communities and municipal officials have made during, about the open meeting law, about public document requests, about conflicts of interest? And what actions would you take to help those communities reduce the chances they make the same errors?
So again, just adding on to what I was talking about, a big part is education, a big part is communication. And so I believe the most common things over the last, let's say, five years, I get a lot of inquiries about conflicts of interest, I get a lot of inquiries about open meeting law violations. I think our town has done incredibly well in both. You can actually go back, I don't know how quantifiable this is or how it really relates to me, because there's a lot of other people doing a lot more and more important stuff in our town than me, but you can look at our town from 10 years ago to present, and you probably see a very significant difference. But I, I believe those kind of things, again, it's about education, it's about communication, and it's about accessibility. So sometimes the education doesn't get through. Sometimes there's no communication in advance. But if you're accessible prior to those things becoming issues, you can hit them off. And that's my example of sometimes I'll get a call right before a meeting. Hey, this, if I'm not accessible, that becomes a problem. If I am accessible, I just stop the problem.
What's your overall philosophy about litigation involving the town? And does it change depending on whether the town is the plaintiff or the defendant in a case?
No, my perspective on litigation never changes. My, my perspective on litigation is to ethically and zealously represent the position of my client. And I, I don't think, I don't think you'd ever hear that I don't do that. I think in my mind, solving problems short of litigation is always a better solution. And I, again, a big part of that comes back to communication. It's how were the abutters treated in a meeting? Were they respected? Did people let them talk? Were they heard? That is important. That matters to people that want to come and rebut something. You, you might not agree with them, but be respectful. Don't roll your eyes at them. Don't, don't shut them down, let them talk. People can have differing positions in you without it becoming a hostile thing. And so I'm of the belief, again, that a big part of this comes back to that communication. Town government runs on it. Town government succeeds because those lines are open. And I really think you, you can really solve a lot of problems by teaching people how to respect other people, teaching people how to have a differing opinion on things and still be respectful, which is really hard. I'll give an example. That's really hard to do if you're a volunteer on a ZBA board, okay? Really hard. They are not lawyers. I'm trained to have people yell at me and insult me and come after me, right? That, I have very thick skin, it just doesn't bother me. So I'm trained in that. But someone that's a volunteer on a board might have a normal job. They are a construction worker, they're not getting yelled at, well, maybe, that might be a bad, maybe they're getting yelled at by the developer. All right, so let's, they're someone working at Home Depot, selling stuff, and they're not getting yelled at every day because it's not the pandemic and people's tempers aren't short. But let's just assume, they're just, they're working their job and they're not used to it. Talking to them about, the law says this, someone may disagree with the law, but even with that disagreement, it is not a personal thing. So you have to just maintain your composure and your focus and make your decision. I can't tell you how many things have been prevented by having those conversations, and how many pieces of litigation I've had to deal with because of the disrespect between abutters, developers, boards. It's, it's all about that communication, right? Win or lose, I represent developers and I lose. I represent towns and I lose. I represent developers and I win. I represent towns and I win. It's not a personal thing. It's a, it's all about you creating, making your position known, being respectful, and by doing that, you can create a better atmosphere that prevents a lot of the litigation. Because I see a lot of litigation come over personal vendettas rather than over the law or over, you know, just an issue, right? That maybe could be practically solved anyway.
And in connection with all that, what is your strategy in defending town officials when you know those officials have taken an action that you would not have recommended? And what would you do if you were asked to defend an action that was clearly illegal?
Well, my job is to defend the action. So I have also in the past, I, I like to look at my career as having a lot of facets. I have tried criminal cases. I've represented people... I've represented people that they would say, oh, well, how can you represent someone that's been accused of a crime? Well, that's my job. So I zealously defend within the confines of my ethics whoever my client is. Whatever my belief in their position in that moment is often irrelevant, especially if it's specific to a town official and I've been charged with the task of representing that town official. I may tell the town official in private conversations, I don't agree with what happened, but there is no one that will defend their position more than me at the end of the day. I, I, I will zealously defend their positions. I will try their cases. I will take it as far as it needs to go. Um, and, and that's what I'm tasked to do. I'm the protector of that person in that moment and I take that very seriously. And I, and I try not to project my own judgments on people. That, that's always been, I think, part of my practice is to take people in situations for as they are, not as you wish they were. Because my job is never as I wish it was. Otherwise you wouldn't need a lawyer. Right? Cause that'd mean everything was perfect. My job is to not judge the situation, but to defend the position of the person or the board.
Do you have anything, Gordon?
Oh, I'm good. Um, you got three minutes left, is there?
Oh, I, I got three minutes? Well, you guys went all the way to the end with the last people. Geez, I must, I must not be that good. Um.
Well, they had, they had three people.
Well, fair enough. Yeah, so I, maybe I could pass it on to, to someone else. Um, I can tell you, I've worked with a lot of people in your community. Um, I have worked really hard to be an active member in your community. I have put in a lot of volunteer hours in your community without any expectation of pay. I, and I don't expect my work as a volunteer to change if you all decide to go a different route. I will not take it personally. I totally understand everyone has their own positions. Um, I will continue to volunteer and I will continue to be an active member of your community regardless. So let me just put that out there. I'm not a sour grapes kind of person and I, I will, I will live regardless of what you all decide. Um, but again, I think what, the, the most important thing to think about and putting everything else aside is, are you going to hire someone that you feel like you can pick up the phone and talk to? And talk out an issue? And I just think as a town attorney, as a town council, that is the most important thing someone can offer you. Not what he said, she said, they said. No, cause I don't get into any of that. All right? And that's part of how I've kept my job in Bridgewater for so long is I don't get into that. I listen to my clients and I counsel my clients. And I think it is probably the, the single most important thing a, a good town attorney can do. And I'm not saying I'm a good town attorney. I'm just saying, I think generally speaking, that's the most important.
I hope you're a good town attorney.
Well, I've been, I, I've been doing it for long enough now. And to stay on, I will say, I think it's rare to have a town attorney that's been through three town managers and a ch- a changing government. So I'll let my resume speak for itself as to what my efficacy is. Um, I mean, I have some other awards on there. Uh, I hate talking about them. I, I don't, you're only as good as your last case. And sometimes as lawyers, we lose our last case. So I, I don't look at my awards, but you can see them on my, on my resume.
Well, thank you for meeting.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you, Larry?
I'm well. Thank you for having me.
No problem. Um, so we've been asking everyone to just tell us about themselves and their firms and why they want to be.
Helen James.
Sure. Um, Larry Mayo, my firm is Attorney Lawrence P. Mayo, PC. Uh, I'm located in Norwell, just up the road. Um, I've actually been town council for the town of Halifax for the past 11 years, believe it or not. Um, time flies. I remember sitting in this room 11 years ago when I was first interviewed by Troy and a couple of others. Um, again, I'd like to continue the relationship with Halifax. Um, general municipal and state government law is my forte, I would say. Um, it's one of the principal components of my practice. Um, since 1996, when I graduated from law school, uh, I jumped into the municipal, uh, legal environment, first working as Assistant Corporation Counsel for the city of Boston, uh, for four or five years, where I was one of 80 or 90 attorneys handling all different sorts of, um, matters for the city, essentially acting as its law firm, you know, ranging from telecommunications, contract, construction, uh, civil rights, employment, um, health insurance, you name it, we did it. Um, I left the city in two, about 2000, 2001, started my own practice and immediately, uh, took on, um, a couple of municipal clients. In particular, uh, the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, who I represented for 20 years, as well as the city of Lawrence. Um, I enjoyed it. I continued to, uh, build the practice with municipal and other governmental clients, ranging from the town of Halifax to the, uh, Massachusetts State Lottery Commission, to the Department, Massachusetts Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, which is the state's real estate holding entity essentially. Uh, in, in representing all of these different governmental clients. Um, I've, I've, uh, been responsible, if you will, for, um, advising and representing these different entities, their individual offices and directors in, you know, some very complex legal issues, as well as some very mundane legal issues. Uh, but again, it, it's spread across the board, ranging from municipal finance or state finance to, uh, telecommunications, construction, uh, planning, zoning, uh, technology. Um, I've enjoyed the work. I've enjoyed working with these different governmental organizations, including their individual members. And, um, that's what I plan to keep doing. And I'd like to, again, continue working with the town of Halifax moving forward. So that's the nature of the practice. That's where it started. Here's where I am now.
Sure.
When you give advice on a certain subject, what, what are your thoughts? Depending on the phone call you receive?
On what, sir?
I'm trying to clear my throat. When you give an opinion?
Yes.
Someone calls you for an opinion?
Yes.
What's your strategy?
Well, my strategy is first and foremost to sort of take in the nature of the entire situation, number one. And then, you know, determine, if you will, who I'm making, who I'm making the decision, not making the decision for, but, um, working with in order for them to come to a conclusion. You know, is it an individual board member's, um, um, situation that I'm trying to work through with them? Or is it, you know, a, a board, uh, chair who's actually, you know, working with me to sort of develop a policy or a strategy position for, um, um, an entire board moving forward that can be presented at the next public meeting that they might be involved in? But again, you know, whatever the situation is, I'm trying to be, you know, um, comprehensive in terms of my understanding of the situation, uh, comprehensive in terms of my understanding of the law that is involved in the situation. And then being honest and forthright with the, uh, particular, uh, uh, board member who's, you know, asking for the advice. Um, I think, you know, what you have to do, uh, as municipal council is provide good, honest, fair and accurate legal advice. Not advice that the particular individual may find, uh, most appealing to him or her, but, um, individual advice that is, um, going to serve the individual that you're working with and or the board that they're representing, um, to the best extent. So you don't tell them simply or, or advise them, you know, as to what they may want to hear. Um, I think you got to advise them right to the very end with respect to what is the, what is best for this particular situation? What will the best outcome be, um, if a certain decision is made one way or the other, depending on what the situation is?
Okay.
How many other towns are you currently counsel for?
Other towns? Right now, none. Halifax is it. I resigned from the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority just a couple of months ago after 20 years. The commute was just too much up to Lawrence, you know, several times a month.
How accessible do you feel you are? Are we able to call, text, email anytime, any day? Get a response?
I, I like to think I'm very accessible. Um, if you don't get a hold of me right away with respect to a call or an email, I try and get back to everybody by the end of the day. It may fall over to the next morning, depending on when you call. But I think 90% of the time, I, I get back by the end of the day.
Um, what is your practice on conflicts among two boards, committee members, employees?
In terms of me, the attorney, having a conflict myself?
No, no, no. Like, how would you, um, deal with a situation where you had two boards that were disagreeing or committee members or?
Um, again, it's to try and understand the entire situation and give the best advice you can under the circumstances. Um, you know, different boards have different jurisdictions. And sometimes, you know, the conflicts that you bump into are, you know, one board or a member of a board, um, not necessarily agreeing with what another member of a board or the other board has done. Um, but trying to get that individual, um, to understand that, you know, you may not like what this different board decided, but that's not within your jurisdiction. It's not within your purview. Um, so that, that's sort of the principal point you would make. Uh, you can try and walk them through, as an example, what their jurisdiction may be in relation to the general situation that the other board is working with. But you also have to, again, coach them and, you know, hope that they understand that, again, each board has a different purpose and a different jurisdiction. They may seem to overlap in some situations. For instance, if you're dealing with planning, zoning, development, you know, you know, building permits and things like that, even conservation, they can all, to a certain degree, overlap. But, you know, um, one board should, if not has to, respect the decision. They may not like it, but at the end of the day, they, they have to respect, I think, the decision of what, you know, a sister board may be determining under a separate jurisdiction.
Do you offer any trainings to our board members and committee members?
As far as conflicts of interest go and things like that and ethics? Sure. I mean, I've done it in the past. I, I think the last one I did in Halifax was, I can't remember. It was several years ago. But at the same time, I, you know, like to encourage members, in particular, new members of these, you know, boards and committees to, um, look to the state Ethics Commission, who very much regularly, um, promotes, um, um, ethics training, um, at the state level. And, you know, they having the, you know, ultimate jurisdiction over state ethics, um, I think the best training you can get is by and through them. They do it locally and, um, through the pandemic, they've actually done some training sessions online. But it's there. It's, you know, it's available and I do encourage it.
What do you think the town could do better about, um, interaction with our town council? And how do you more effectively communicate?
I think one of the, an, an important communication feature, I think, is if and when a particular board member contacts me, um, it's made clear whether they are, um, contacting me for purposes of, you know, representing the board in and of itself. You know, you know, have they been appointed, if you will, or designated the appointee on any, on any particular situation to, uh, you know, converse with me and take information from me? Um, and go back to the board with it for purposes of, for instance, an agenda item? Or are they contacting me, um, for purposes of discussing something they, uh, they need some personal, personal guidance on within the realm of their official capacity, of course. Um, you know, if a board member contact, you know, a board member may contact me in connection with a decision that's about to be made or may be made soon. And they may want to know, you know, what is the law here? What, what sort of leeway do I have in terms of taking into consideration factors that, um, may or may not be right now, um, under the control of or within the purview of the board? Um, you know, what is my personal sort of responsibility or culpability if we decide one way versus another? Um, how might, as an example, a different board view that? And, you know, what, what kind of, um, adverse consequence or effect might that have on another board's decision in relation to the matter? That kind of thing. So it's important to me to know upfront, um, is this, you know, individual contacting me on more of an individual basis? Or are they contacting me for the benefit, you know, of the entire board? And, you know, that, that's something I, you know, that should be ferried out at the outset.
Do you feel that the way that we've segregated different council into different roles is sort of a detriment to the town where we're not?
You, you, I, I'm guessing or supposing that you're referring to Employment Council?
Well, so we have Employment Council, we have Land Use Council, and we have regular town council. Is there, do, do you feel that, you, now, this is, I guess, really, um, more of a pointed question for you because you are, currently are town council.
Right.
Do you think that there's, if we were looking to make improvements in our use of legal services, that if we were going to one point person and having our town council, you know, all those matters, it might stop a division between two separate perspectives? Where if you're, if you're giving the advice and you know what advice you've given to person A and you know what advice has been given to person B, it's not conflicting? Where it seems like you could get conflicting advice right now?
I understand. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, I think that with respect to, you know, in particular, um, real estate council and town council, I don't want to say, it, it could be more advantageous to have it wrapped up within one particular, uh, entity or attorney, you know, or attorney services. You know, it's really, because when some of these matters come to bear, I can say that I, as town council, don't always necessarily know what's going on and what has transpired in weeks, months, even years past sometimes with respect to real estate or real estate litigation. Um, that may simply be a lack of communication among and between me and whoever the real estate council is. Um, but if there's one sort of a consolidation that could be beneficial, that would be it. Um, as far as the labor council goes, I'm not seeing, among labor council and I anyway, a lack of communication. I don't know, I mean, I don't do, and it's really a separate specialty. The, um, um, labor law, you know, in particular, negotiating collective bargaining agreements and things like that. I, I don't do it. Um, so there's no sort of loss of communication because I'm totally out of the loop in that regard. You know, with respect to any employment matter, um, that's come up, you know, straight, you know, as an example, wage and personnel employee. I, I don't know the extent to which labor council gets involved in that. I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it's that much. Um, I don't feel like there's anything lost there as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
So that's just my thought on it. Others may see it differently. But that's my thought on it.
How do you feel as, you benefited the town since you're up in town council?
Well, I think I benefited the town by being accessible. Um, you know, again, I'm responsive. I've tried to steer the town as far clear, you know, prudently in taking into consideration all elements of facts and law from litigation as I can. I've tried to be as efficient, um, um, both in terms of the amount of time I spend in working with the town. Uh, and, you know, I like to just think that I prioritize the town's needs at any particular, you know, moment in time. You know, there's always a lot of work coming at me. Um, sometimes you have to take. Sometimes you have to take what was first in line and place it somewhere else in the rubric for sake of clearing a more imminent or important matter at the moment. So I think I'm pretty good at prioritizing, you know, what has to be done. I like to think I have a good line of communication with the several members of this board, with Charlie, and with all of the other boards and, you know, department heads that I work I, I don't have an open, you know, phone policy with the other department heads. Obviously, if they contact me, they have to go through Charlie first. But when they do contact me, we have a free and open conversation with respect to whatever the problem is at hand. I can usually, you know, and because of that communication level and style I have, I like to think that I can, you know, these department heads will share all of the information that they have at hand, all of the important information, and even the non-important information. And because they trust me in my judgment, you know, I can get to the root of the matter pretty quickly and solve a problem.
Charlie, do you have a question?
I think you pretty much just covered everything that I would have asked.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
So Gordon, you had received letters from town officials about the interview or appointment process for town council. I didn't know whether you wanted them read into the record or not.
I think we just put them into the record. I don't think we need to read them out loud. Do you guys want to think about this and vote on Tuesday? Or are you ready to make a decision now?
I'm fine with voting it, putting it first on the agenda Tuesday and being able to follow up with some references and.
Okay. All right. So we'll list it for the first agenda item for Tuesday then. Okay. Do we cover the zoning bylaw review yet? Or do we just start? We just start that, right?
We just start. So what had happened is that Mark Prabrowski met with the finance committee back on Monday, just to sort of give an initial framework about the work that he expects to be doing. Part of that process, obviously, is involving towns' boards and commissions, it involves the town officials, involves a heavy amount of public participation in the process, but there has to be material, for instance, for people to react to. And since people were involved, welcome to attend the finance committee meeting. We did it via Zoom because Mark was coming in remotely. And I believe he's scheduled to meet with them again on the 12th of July. I believe I've given the board his memo that he gave to the finance committee before that meeting on Monday, so that you also have an outline of the work that he expects to accomplish.
Okay.
Old Dana Road land transfer, we did get the check yesterday for the $150,000. We haven't cashed it yet. Not that I think it's going to bounce, but it came in late. Joan was in close to 4:00 o'clock, so we'll get that done.
Has she given any other update on the other part?
She said she'll put as much pressure as she can on D.C.A.M. to do the other land transfers. COVID issues and news, more may be aware that there was legislation approved and passed and everything last week that basically allows the continuation of the remote meeting process that we've been doing for the last year, so boards and committees can continue as long as they're following the same rules. Same thing with alcohol sales to some extent. I believe the takeaways are extended into May, but not past that, or go to, you know, take home drinks and such. The outdoor permits are extended for, for longer than that, but I'm not sure that we've got any of the restaurants that were doing it last year doing it so far this spring. But they don't have to go through the normal zoning process to be able to continue outdoor alcohol sales. Opera funding to the town, seeing Noel and I are working with getting the forms in and the information to the state so that we can get our first check issued. I haven't seen anything directly from Plymouth County yet. I guess there's still discussion there about whether they want to play a role as conduit. I don't really see the necessity for them to do so. I think actually, given that, in a sense, the money is the same money, it's something coming from one route or another, it would more sense, make more sense for the county to release the funds back to the state to redistribute it. That way, if we're having to deal with a question about whether the funds that we're going to be receiving will be spent appropriately, we're just dealing with one entity and getting one opinion ahead of time or even after. But I don't know whether you wanted to communicate that to Plymouth County or not.
And you haven't heard anything from Tom O'Brien at all?
Nothing, no. I mean, the last word I had was, I think, was a couple of weeks ago, when the commissioners had met, and we're still looking at the options, but I haven't got any word from Tom or from the commissioners.
Before we say anything to him, can you give him one little call, find out what's going on?
Sure.
If that, that case, because I'm not sure how it benefits us either way, if we decide not to be involved in the program or to, but to take the money from the state, because the state's going to be involved, probably come into turnaround time.
Well, actually, the first check that's been issued, as long as the paperwork's in, there are communities that are already getting their money. So this is going to be, in one way, it's far simpler in terms of getting the money. It's not a reimbursement program, unlike the COVID cares money, where we have to spend the money, send all the documentation, for instance, to Plymouth County, and then get a reimbursement. We're getting the checks directly. What our, the challenge will be for us is ensuring.
It's the audit on the other side.
Yeah.
So if they're not going to provide an auditing system, then it doesn't really make sense to have them get passed through. Do you know when the next advisory meeting is, Charlie?
It's the 30th, it looks like, because while you've been meeting.
Maybe it'll be till fall.
Well, the advisory board's meeting on June 30th. While you are, we've been meeting, I got the note from Nancy O'Rourke, which I would get to you as soon as we finish.
It's the 30th.
It's the first I heard of it. You did receive a town bank form from Sarah Nobles, who I add her to the people to come in next Tuesday for youth education. You do need to make a public meeting decision on the contract with the sergeants for fiscal 21. The board had approved it in exec, but it needs to be on the public session record.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
On the legal case, I'm not, I'm not aware of any reason to go into executive session, so we can skip over that. Jeski Problems in Mount Ponton Pond, we had received a complaint from a resident. I correspond with the police chief. He's doing as well as he can. He, unfortunately, I guess the officers aren't interested in going out in the vote that the fire department has been in force. I know that Scott Turner, I mean, the buoys are out, but we may need to move the buoys around and give more protection to the swimmers at the beach area.
I think that's important.
As far as the noise and music and swearing and everything, I'm not quite sure what we, outside of asking the police department when they can to, you know, basically ask people to simmer down a bit, I'm not sure that there's much else we can do.
Amy, I'm not going to take any public participation today.
I do think we should talk about moving the swim lines out farther.
Traffic issues with Walnut.
So Charlie, on that.
Yeah.
Most of the problems occurring on the weekend.
Mm-hmm.
And with some of the funding that's coming available, it might be, might be able to have, I mean, it seems like there's going to be more and more people coming together after COVID and trying to basically live up the last year and a half that they missed out on. It might be something to talk to the police chief about, having a couple extra details on the weekends for that area.
If he can get the people to.
If he can get, because there's a, it's going to be an issue with the SPOs.
We should probably.
We should probably add that to Tuesdays.
Have one next weekend for the 4th of July, so we can talk to the chief about that beforehand.
Because Boston released guidance last night about the SPOs and then basically all being suspended, if they didn't have the right training.
Traffic issues with Walnut Street, we had a resident mention that they have a blind driveway. They'd like to get a blind driveway sign and also vegetation at one of the properties next to them. I have, Pam had received it originally, and it got referred to the traffic safety committee. They have, it's only been a few days, so they haven't met. I can, you know, and so Steve Hayward's aware of it also at this point.
So that's different than the Thompson Street one, right, that we referred?
Right. I think, well, this is, I may have.
Because this is.
Yeah, this was different. Walnut Street was, sorry, that was from several months ago, and I don't think the traffic safety committee's met since that complaint was filed, so I'll get that back to them again.
Okay.
And then we have the complaints from David Maschio against Margaret Selter, a complaint about, from Margaret Selter against Amy L. Troop, and a complaint by Teresa Rinald against Amy L. Troop. I had recommended to the board that unless they wanted to use town council for that, that they, my recommendation was to use an outside firm, such as Regina Ryan's firm, to investigate the complaints. I don't know what the board would like to do on these.
Pardon? Outside firm?
Yes. That way, we've eliminated, I mean, if we have an outside third party, they haven't been involved.
Maybe we should wait till Tuesday and see who we decide on town council and then go from there, because maybe we can use our own town council.
Happy to follow. We go to an outside firm to investigate.
I'm sorry?
An outside firm.
Well, that would be, unless you're going to use town council, that would be my recommendation, yes. They have experience in doing this type of thing. It's sort of like, you know, picking a surgeon, only does the surgery once a year versus one that does it every week.
Well, that would be my motion.
Ashley, what did you say?
I just said that we should move it till Tuesday, until we decide who town council is, and maybe we would want to use our own town council. What's the financial part of this as far as using our own town council versus using an outside firm?
You'll be spending money either way.
But is one more significant than the other? So can we, can you do a little research on what it's going to cost to use that other firm?
I could try and see if I can get an answer for Tuesday.
And then we can push it to Tuesday and then decide on that meeting.
Okay.
You need a vote on that, Charlie?
No, no.
So I guess the estimated cost to handle that from our current town council and from the firm that you recommended? Is there anything else?
No, and I will need to go into executive session at all.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.